Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, December 20th. And Selectman Heller is joining us by telephone. And I need to read the remote participation statement. And here it goes. Pursuant to this board's authority under 940 CMR 29.10 per N8, Selectman Heller will be participating remotely via telephone due to geographic distance. There's a quorum physically present and all votes will be taken by roll call. And Selectman Heller will be allowed to vote. And I've reviewed the participation checklist and find that we're in compliance. So, Selectman Heller, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and we can hear you. So that's a good thing. Starting with some announcements, so I guess the first announcement is we're going to make a little news. You may recall to render the decisions so we can be more careful, deliberate, and not be as rushed as we've been. Additionally, the state is allowing us to not open any new hearings until April 1, 2017. So that will help us start whittle down the ZBA backlog. And then in addition, the town may defer opening a new hearing if opening the hearing would cause the total number of applications pending before the board to exceed four. And that's going to be good until the end of the year. And that's going to really help us.
The end of 2017.
Correct. Yes, yes. The end of next year. So that's going to really help the ZBA. And I think, as far as I know, this is the first time DHCD has granted this kind of relief. But this is, I think, the first time there's ever been 10 40B applications pending in any one community. This is unprecedented times. And I guess the good news is we have enough units in the pipeline so that at the end of this onslaught, hopefully, we will have met the 40B 10 percent safe harbor. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel. So that's perhaps the only good news. Well, the other good news is out of this will be some more affordable housing units, which is a good thing. But unfortunately, under 40B, only 20 or 25 percent of the units have to be affordable. Though, there is one project before us where we're getting 100 percent affordability. We're going to be talking about that project a little later tonight. So, and I'll also say that I'm going to be called away, I'm told, anywhere between 7:30 and 8:00 for just a short time to go downstairs and meet with the ZBA. So Selectman Daley will take over while I'm gone. Any announcements? Selectman Green?
I think Selectman Franco may want to mention the relief from the overnight parking ban that-
I was going to say that, but-
I'll leave that to you. Other than to say, I hope it's both Hanukkah, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. So a great bit of relief. Anyway, I wanted to report on two meetings that I think are interesting and important that I attended. The Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations meeting last week was held. And Chief O'Leary appeared and discussed the efforts being undertaken by the Police Department in connection with bias training and related matters. I just want to note that he was very informative and was very well received by the commission. And I thought that the discussion, both his presentations, well, the questions that came up were very, very useful, very, very positive. And I think I came away with a good feeling from the commission, a good feeling about the commission. And it's important that the board know that that seems to be rolling along fairly well. They're going to be sin- We should know about anyway is sort of in response to the unease in the country and in Brookline for reasons that, you know, I think we all can guess. The Chair of the Commission, Kelly Race, is involved in a meditation event at the Schluntz Gym on the morning of January 16th. So that sounds interesting. The other meeting I attended on behalf of the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee was a meeting with the Brookline Interfaith Council. It was a very, you know, good meeting with them in terms of MLK event. But I just want to mention that one of the things that that group seems to be very, very interested in and that I've just been running into all across town is the issue of sanctuary city or sanctuary town. And more specifically, with their concerns are the refugee issues. And we had an appointment to the Health Advisory Council who, you know, has some expertise in that area in terms of mental health, health and trauma. And I mentioned to them that they should touch base with that person and sort of coordinate their efforts. So those are two meetings that I think were particularly relevant or important that I attended.
I've received some queries about our status as a sanctuary city or town. And I think perhaps that's something we should discuss as a board in the New Year in one of our meetings.
Absolutely.
We should say that Town Meeting has passed-
Right.
Several, I don't know if-
Two.
Two resolutions.
Two resolutions that we should be a sanctuary city. What that actually means in practice, I think, is what you're saying we should have more discussion on.
And the police chief has pulled, and other people have pulled together a lot of information that give us some guidance as well as sort of, as well as indicate the complexity of the issue. I mean, it's not as straightforward as we'd like it to be, but it is important and it's going to become more important.
So I have a quick announcement, which-
Excuse me, excuse me just one minute. I've also had some inquiries about sanctuary city issue. I passed on the most recent resolution that was done, I believe, in November of 2006 by Town Meeting. But I think there are people out there who want to know about the effort and may not be in touch with one another. So I'm wondering whether there is anyone in the town who sort of is in charge of kind of sanctioning this for the effort and whether, or whether I should just direct people to the police chief or whomever.
Um, well, yeah, we're going to take this up after the New Year. And I guess it depends on what the question is. You know, if it's a general-
Well, in the meantime, what I'll do if I have any further inquiries and I'll go back to people who've already inquired, tell them we're going to discuss it in the New Year and to look at our agendas and then we can go from there.
Okay. Selectman Franco?
So quickly, Selectman Green previewed my announcement. I think everybody knows that there is no overnight parking typically permitted in Brookline. But we have a couple of exceptions to that rule around holidays. And I know the chief and the town administrator will correct me if I misspeak here, but I believe that you will be allowed to park on the street overnight three nights in the next two weeks. That being Christmas Eve, the 24th, Christmas Day, the 25th, and then New Year's Eve, the 31st of December. So over the next couple of weeks when there are a lot of visitors to town, people have family and friends here, you can park overnight on the street. And I think we all wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season.
Okay, let's dive into the calendar. We're going to hold the minutes. And the next item is the question of approving an extra work order with, for $7,772 with Ronald Marini, General Contractor for the Putnam Library Landscape Improvements Project. Ms. Gallantyne?
Good evening. Erin Gallantyne, Director of Parks and Open Space. And this is requests. This request is for an extra work order to complete and close out the Putnam Library Grounds Improvement Project. This project was to create a passive pocket park next to Putnam Library and a fully accessible reading garden that is accessible now from the front of the library as well as along the back from the parking, from the rear. And it's a beautiful space. It's incredibly welcoming. The library sees this as a tremendous opportunity to enhance their programming, and it's a wonderful spot for the neighborhood. So we see this as a real success and are looking forward to closing this out. And I imagine that you will see a celebration in coordination with the library in the spring.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Well, I just want to say I'm very pleased you pushed ahead with this project because, I mean, they have, you know, a nice amount of land around that branch library, but the old little garden area was completely inaccessible to anyone with disabilities. So this is great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the extra work order, number one, in the amount of $7,772 pursuant to the DPW contract with the Ronald A. Marini Corp., General Contract for the Putnam Library Landscape Improvements Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next item is a question of awarding and executing a contract in the amount of $19,200 with Feldman Surveyors for the completion of the existing condition survey at the Brookline Reservoir Park. Ms. Gallantyne?
Yes, so the, we are about to embark on the design review process for the rehabilitation of Brookline Reservoir Park. And that renovation will include fully repointing, regrouding the interior basins. We're going to lower the water level, repoint that. We need to rebuild the perimeter stone dust walking track, deal with some erosion issues both from the road and also the track that's sloping into the basin itself. And we're looking to make improvements to the entrances to the park, so to make them handicap accessible, and some planting enhancements, and the addition of a comfort station on site, and a whole host of other little invasives removal. We're dealing with some treatment of the water itself. And so the first step is always to get a engineering survey. And this will, we've, Parking Rec has appointed the four commissioners that will be working on this. And we will have a kickoff meeting probably in the spring. And I've already met with the Friends of Brookline Reservoir to let them know what the process is and what they can look forward to through our public initiative.
Look forward. I don't know if some of this project is looking forward.
I mean, isn't there a huge number of beautiful trees that have to come out to meet the state requirements?
So approximately a third of the reservoir is classified as a dam, maybe a little bit less, and needs to be in compliance with the Commonwealth's Office of Dam Safety. We have met on site with staff and have submitted our, it's a biennial engineering report. There's actually another one that's going to be due in the coming months that does an overall conditions assessment of the dam itself. One factor that the Commonwealth likes to see is no vegetation whatsoever other than grass on orphaned dam embankments. We brought them out to the site. We explained the history of the site. It was new information to the town that we fell into this category. And so we asked them to give us some time to work through this design review process to come up with a strategy for potentially keeping the signature ring of quince and cherry trees that are on the top of the berm to remove trees that are in sort of past their prime and starting the process of decline, potentially increased inspections on our part, and also maybe some other types of treatments, planted treatments on the berm that will provide the screening that we need. In particular, on the Route 9 side is where we feel most concerned and most vulnerable. And so at this point, they've allowed us to proceed with our process and come up with a strategy. We will then have to present it to them and see if they'll agree with what we propose.
So you're saying the trees that are going to come out are ones that are in decline. Are there some trees that are going to come out though that are not in that category?
There absolutely are. In particular, by the gatehouse, they will want a certain amount of clearance on that portion of the dam as it faces Route 9.
Because, I mean, I will say, first of all, since that's kind of up on a hill, you know, all the trees sort of keep things from eroding. But also, it is a beautiful place. And those trees between Route 9 and the reservoir are important to block the wind, to block the noise. And so I hope that I will ask you to keep fighting for as many of them as we can keep.
Absolutely. We absolutely agree.
Selectman Green?
Yeah. I'm going to raise an issue I always raise when issues like this come up. Water. I see that we're constructing restroom facilities, but it doesn't indicate, although I assume that it will include drinking water fountains.
We will replace the existing drinking water fountain with a new accessible fountain that also has a bottled water refill component.
The one on the, on the south end of the park?
Deadly, on the deadly street side.
Yeah. And one of dubious quality.
Yes.
The other thing is, the reason why I mention that is that, you know, the Bottled Water Committee, which presented its report to the Town Meeting, also has been working with you and other town officials to come up with a list of things that have been done or on the drawing board with respect to providing access to municipal water as an alternative to people using bottled water. And, you know, we haven't gotten everything we need. So I want to just make the other point that it's important for us to let the community know that we've moved in that direction and specifically what we've done.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Absolutely. And that's frankly part of our standard now as we move forward with every park renovation project.
Selectman Franco?
So I realize that design review is going to commence in the spring and we're at the very beginning of this process. But I'm wondering what the initial thinking for future use of the gatehouse is. Is it going to be part of the park opened up or is it going to sort of continue its current status as a, as an accessory, an aesthetic pleasure, but not allowing public access?
So currently, we're investigating the plausibility of using the gatehouse for the comfort station itself. I have met with Preservation, with Dennis DeWitt on site. And we're going to do just a basic feasibility study to look at, can we make it accessible? Can we meet code? What would be an order of magnitude cost so that we can frame our request for proposal when we go out for our design services? It would be far better if we could tell them exactly what we would like to do and we'd like to construct a comfort station in this, in this building. And whether it can also be done in a way where we can have a comfort station and then contemplate further restoration of the structure and use in the future. So we're hoping that that would be feasible.
Any other questions, comments? I will therefore move that we award and execute a contract in the amount of $19,200 with Feldman Surveyors Engineering Survey Services for the completion of an existing condition survey at Brookline Reservoir Park. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Next item is a question of awarding and executing a contract in the amount of $529,450 for elevator upgrades here at Town Hall and the physical education building. And I certainly know we need it here at Town Hall. Mr. Masak?
Yes, this is a continuing appropriation to renovate our elevator infrastructure. We have four bids. And we have worked with Enterprise and the Elevator Company, both at the Lawrence and the Pierce. So I do recommend it.
Comments, questions? I think we should probably do this. So I'll move that we award and execute the contract in the amount of $529,450 with Enterprise Equipment Company for elevator upgrades at Town Hall and the physical education building. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman, I was going to say Selectman Kleppner. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair, I'm trying to force you to move to Brookline. Chair votes aye.
Wait, did you just say demoting?
Holiday show.
Let's not forget who the bosses are.
Yeah. For each one fifth of a mayor.
Next item, thank you, Mr. Masak. Next item is a question of accepting a donation in the amount of $500 from the Korean Church of Boston for the Brookline Police Department's Youth Police Initiative Program. Chief O'Leary?
Good evening. Once again, Reverend Lee and the Korean Church of Boston have been very generous in their donation to us. I met with Reverend last week when he came in and we, I told him that I was hoping that the board would accept this on our behalf and would use it to enhance our YPI program. And just a little bit about the YPI program. We started it together with Cambridge, Chelsea, and Everett. Cambridge, Chelsea, and Woburn, and ourselves, the four departments went together and we joined this group that's actually a nationwide group. What it does is it brings police and young men and women from their communities together for a series of five nights over a couple of week period, and it culminates with a graduation. We've done now two of them. Last spring, we did our first, which was a group of young men from Housing. We had them in. They met a number of Brookline Police Officers as well as the officers from Chelsea, Cambridge, and Woburn. And I think they had a very enjoyable week together. They got to get a feel of police officers outside of their uniforms, outside of their roles in policing, and got to know us a little bit more. In November of this year, we brought in a group of young women from Housing again. And they worked with us, the same group of police officers, but we had different officers from our department go in there at night to work with them. And I attended their graduation, which we had over at the Lincoln School. And they gave some pretty moving talks as to what the program meant to them. So I thought that if we can have this money to take care of some of the costs associated with it, it would be a great program to continue in the town.
Okay. Selectman Daley?
Well, that sounds like a very fine program. But I just want to say I'm grateful to the Korean Church of Boston, which is actually here in Brookline. It's our neighbor across the street. And they have been, I'm probably pointing in the wrong direction.
They did.
Yeah, okay. They have been very good about, for many years, giving a contribution each year to the Police Department and typically they do the Fire Department as well. And I really think it's nice when a nonprofit recognizes that they do get some benefit from the town and, you know, gives back a little bit.
I think he's been doing it with us now for probably eight to 10 years. And I'd be, I'm probably underestimating that.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the donation in the amount of $500 from the Korean Church of Boston, located in Brookline, for the Brookline Police Department's Youth Police Initiative Program. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Next item is a question of approving the request of Assistant Town Administrator Austin Faison for two appropriation transfers in the amount of $15,000 each for the Finance Department.
Good evening. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator, in the role as interim finance director for this. As of right now, we don't have a finance director in place. The HR Department has worked with the Town Administrator concerning bringing on the nonprofit professional advisory group to help us narrow our search for a potential candidate for finance director. And what this transfer will do is take salary savings from the position over the first half of the fiscal year and apply a portion of them to this executive search form.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'll move that we approve the request to, for two appropriation transfers in the amount of $15,000 each for the Finance Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is a question of executing the First Amendment to the Town of Brookline School Space Lease for 62 Harvard.
I assume the school department will be here, but I'm not sure.
So are we holding this?
Yeah, I think we hold it until somebody can give us an explanation.
Yeah, okay. Next. And we have a temporary license. So I'm going to move that we approve the application of the American Legion VFW, holder of an all kinds alcohol beverage license for a one-day extension of hours for the liquor license from 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM on December 31st to January 1st, 2017, for New Year's Eve celebration at 386 Washington Street. Police Department has reviewed the application and finds no reason to deny the request. So I will move that. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to our main calendar. First item is a question of authorizing the filling of the following vacancies in the Police Department, the Senior Accountant Audit Clerk, and the E-911 dispatcher. Chief Leary?
Yes, back again. Just to follow up on Selectman Franco's dates, those were perfect. Those three dates are, all-night parking is waived, but, so we're all set. Just on the hiring and the senior clerk in the Public Safety Business Office, that office is staffed with three ladies that work in there. A longtime member there, she's been there for about 12 years, has taken a job in the Comptroller's Office starting January 3rd. And we'd like to fill that position. That takes care of the payroll and the budgets for both Police and Fire Departments. It takes care of all the billings for police details, for alarms, for fire inspections, and does a lot of collections work. And I think the work is valuable and the position needs to be filled. The dispatcher, we have another, just another employee that's been with us for about three years. She's taken a job in the probation department on January 3rd, and we'd like to fill her position as well. That position is, as you know, it's staffed right to the bone. It has 15 dispatchers and one supervisor working there, and it's a critical position that needs to be filled. And we do have a person that we've been, he, when we had the multiple openings earlier- earlier this year, we actually gave it, give a test, and we've put together a list, and we still have candidates remaining on the list, so, um, we're ready to hire as long as you give the authorization to do so.
Questions? Selectman Green.
Whenever hiring requests come in, uh, come up, typically one of us, including me, will ask about how you, um, what you did to attract a diverse pool of applicants, and, um, you know, usually I get, this is not directly at you, but usually I get, you know, the usual, um, answers in Section eleven of the Authorization to Hire Form, um, and they're always the same people. So, it seems to me that this is sort of boilerplate, and, and we need to really fix that, um, now, because in, in terms of the dispatcher position, there is a sort of glaring omission, um, of a source for potential dispatchers. And, um, I, I sort of realized this when I did some research on other police departments and their efforts to increase the hiring of minority dispatchers, and that is, uh, community colleges that have law enforcement programs and other programs where people are, um, looking to come into law enforcement, training, uh, for, uh, that profession, and, um, you know, we're sort of not going after them. I think we really need to, to make sure that we target particularly that, um, that, um, source of, of potential recruits. That, that raises a bigger issue though, that, you know, brought up a couple of weeks ago, and that is, we have a human resources board that should be coming up with ideas beyond just, you know, the, um, boilerplate in Section eleven of the, uh, Authorization to Hire Request Form. And again, I'd like to just make the point that, um, you know, we, with that, Human Relations Board should be coming up with better ideas than, than it seems they're coming up with in terms of how to expand the, uh, pool of applicants, uh, available to be considered by the town. Um, so, I mean, that's not directly at you, but I mean, you're, this, uh, request form sort of had that glaring, I think, omission, you know, as their obvious place to get, get recruits.
If I could just touch on that, we've reached out to, as you know, we do call-up students here. We have three call-up students per semester from Northeastern, and we've been taking interns from Newbury Inn, uh, been talking about getting Pine Manor students down here to intern with us as well. Uh, but our last four hires in the Dispatch, one has been an African-American male, two females, and one white male. Matter of fact, the next, uh, candidate on the list who we're going to be processing through is an African-American male as well, uh, to join the Dispatch Center. So they've passed our testing, and they've passed, um, the background checks, and so now, if you give the authorization, then they go to the medicals and psychologicals, that's the next step. And if, if all goes well, um, he'll be hired, um, and entering in, into the academy the second Monday, uh, in January.
Again, not directly at you, but just a reflection of the fact that I'm not really impressed with how creative, you know, some people, um, are with respect to actually increasing the diversity of the pool of applicants, so.
I, I just want to say though, I mean, I don't know with the Police Department, but most of our departments are, are directed to work with the HR office. So I think your complaints should be directed to the HR people, more than the, you know, department people who are told that that's the way you go about the process.
No, fair point, but it's something that I raise, you know, publicly whenever these things come up, is to emphasize the point.
I think there's a lot more depth than what's, what's written on the report, or written on the form, and I think HR and Lloyd should probably come in and someday and explain what's behind it. There's more to it than just what's written on the paper.
Um, I'm gonna move that we fill the positions. How about that?
There's two here.
So I'll move that we authorize the filling of the following vacancies in the Police Department, the Senior Accountant Audit Clerk, and the E nine-eleven dispatcher. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm going to take one item out of order. Thank you.
Could I, could I take a couple of minutes, just for that segue, uh, that Selectman Green allowed on hiring? Um, as you know, we just processed ten candidates through the Police Academy, and they just graduated. They're a little bit more than halfway through their training period now, they've just finished up a week of inside training. Um, but we do have vacancies coming up. Uh, we have, currently have vacancies in the department, uh, positions that we didn't fill, but we have more coming, and there's an exam going to be given by the Simmons that entered into the Lowell Police Academy, we had three of the top people there. Um, and that's not to say anything about the other seven, because everybody is doing very well. But, um, we've done a, a different thing this time, and we put together a video. Um, we had discussed this video for a couple of months, and we ended up talking to a company on Dummer Street, National Boston, who has done a lot of work for us when we want to enhance criminal, uh, pictures for criminal, uh, investigations and, and some, uh, video. And we met with them and asked them about what they thought about assisting us in putting a recruitment video together. So they had some ideas, and of course, we talked about ideas we wanted, and then we asked them if they would want to do this as a community service for us, because we didn't have a lot of money to spend, uh, because we don't have a budget for recruiting, aside from our regular budget. So, they agreed to do it for the donut, for nothing. Uh, they did it because they live in town, and we have a relationship with them, and they've assisted us for many years. Uh, they put a film crew together with us, they, um, asked the questions of the offices and the people, the residents of the town that you see on this video, and they did a fabulous job, I think, but I'll let you decide. Um, we released it publicly, um, I think right around Thanksgiving, maybe just after Thanksgiving. It's received a lot of views on Twitter, I think we're over nineteen thousand. Um, I know that a lot of people have seen it, we've asked a lot of people in town to put it out on their websites, and, um, it's like our centerpiece for our recruitment. We do have a plan, right after, we've been meeting with people, and we've been distributing information on sign-ups, the dates you have to sign up by, what we're looking for, what is the requirements that we have on it, and the exam that's given in March. It's really gonna kick in the gear right after the holidays, but we've done outreach already, we've played this video. Um, I'd like to play it here tonight, it's a little over six minutes, and see what you think.
I think I've always wanted to be a cop, um, since I was a little kid.
I grew up in a law enforcement family, my father was a police officer, my grandfather was a police officer.
To work with people at the try-in, set a good example in the community that I grew up in.
My mother saved a birthday card a year ago, I was in third grade, and I said when I grew up, I wanted to be a police officer, and I think it's been in my blood ever since.
I wanted to continue belonging to an organization that wore a uniform and made an impact.
I still get excited about coming to work every day, and I still get excited about putting the blue lights on.
My father passed away at a young age, I was at a young age, he was actually attacked, and, uh, got stabbed several times, a killer that was never caught, so, when I went, promised myself when I grew up, I was gonna be a police officer to make a difference, and hopefully it doesn't matter, somebody owns the same one after me.
The Brookline Police are seeking problem-solving individuals to join an elite team of law enforcement officers. Positive-minded recruits that want to make a difference, from helping to foster relationships with the underserved and youth of the community, to participating in all major community events. The Brookline Police are a stable influence in a world that can sometimes be unpredictable.
The Brookline Police Department have been wonderful community partners of ours in helping us to do everything from unloading the trucks and shelving food to coming to our rescue when we have clients in need, they are so wonderful at providing safety for our elderly.
They're a tremendous partner in the work we do, we obviously work with youth, uh, we're here to serve the Brookline youth, uh, within our community, with our school system, and we feel fortunate to work very closely hand-in-hand with them.
The Police Department permanently assigns three officers to work with the Housing Authority, work with our staff, get to know our residents. It's been a great success.
Our kids are going to be met with, uh, respect and courtesy, uh, even in their most difficult times, or when they're not feeling at their best, uh, and that's what becomes my, uh, is this trusting relationship that we have with the Police Department.
They've always treated everyone I've ever run into very fairly, very decently, and they go out of their way to help people.
The Brookline Police offer great opportunities for compensation and flexibility. You have the opportunity to be an integral part of this community.
I think that the Brookline Police Officers are very kind and there to help out, and I think their ultimate goal in their heart is to serve our community and help anyone in need.
I think, uh, he's somebody who's quick on the feet, problem-solving, I mean, at the heart of it all, is able to develop relationships with those that he serves.
If you're interested in a career in public safety, helping people, a career with the Brookline Police Department is a perfect opportunity.
You are a good person, good nature, you have a good chance to become one of, uh, Brookline Police Officers.
I think the most critical part is to build relationships and networks with the people that they serve in the community amongst they work, and I think that's something you're very eager to do.
The Brookline Police are proud of the individuals that want Brookline to be a standout city. Brookline offers a great deal of diversity and a truly eclectic mix of people.
Working with elderly was very rewarding, taught and educate elders out of bed from being victimized.
It's very rewarding, fulfilling, every day when you go home, you know that you've done something to help somebody somewhere, and even though from the dispatch side you don't see the people's faces, you hear voices, you still know that you're making a difference in someone's life, you're helping someone out, so that at the end of the day, you really feel like, you know, you achieved something.
Little things happen every day, you could be standing somewhere and a little kid walking down the street will stop and wave, and that, that makes the whole day worthwhile coming in.
It's a dangerous profession, but it's also a very rewarding profession, so if you want to be able to get out there, experience different things, make a difference, or get out of the office, or just be able to interact with other people, it's an amazing profession.
I recently, uh, hosted a basketball program with, uh, some of my housing kids, you know, some of these kids that, you know, come from tougher areas and that don't have really great connections with police officers. After the program was done, they come up to me and, like, give me hugs and high fives, and, you know, it was the most rewarding thing that, that means most to me.
Couple situations where people were homeless, and I found them housing, helped them back on their feet, and it really, uh, makes you feel good when you can do something like that.
After we crossed San Diego, and we were clearing up coast from Watertown, we're driving, we're leaving Watertown, and the streets were lined with people cheering us on, they gave us goosebumps.
I was on the perimeter, so I didn't know what was going on outside, and, um, when we were leaving, it was hundreds, if not thousands of people lining the street, it was late at night, I just didn't expect it, and the cheers really felt.
Everybody that was with me, and we were all amazed at how everybody was out cheering us on, and that was something that I was expecting, but, uh, it just showed that people still believe us.
As Chief of Police of the Brookline Police Department, we're proud to serve our community. I hope that this video has in some way instilled that desire to do as well. We hope to see you soon.
Okay.
I presume if you listen to it on your own computer, you can hear it better.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but if you will the town's website and come over to the police, it's right on our website, BrooklinePolice.com. Um, and, and like I said, it's, it's part of the centerpiece on our efforts to, um, get some good quality people to sign up to take the test and want to work at Brookline, and so if anybody's out there listening, the sign-up is the, by the end of February, and, uh, the exam is the end of March, so.
Great, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna take, uh, an item out of order, because I'm, I might have to step out to go downstairs to appear at the ZBA, and the next item, which is just talking a little about, this is item seven, Coolidge Corner Study Committee, um, since I'm, I'm the one who's supposed to talk about it, um, we won't be able to do it if I'm not here. So, uh, coming, coming before the town are two proposals for large projects. One has been made public already, and that is, uh, a proposed project at the so-called Waldo Durgan Garage, which is at the corner of Pleasant and John Street in Coolidge Corner. What, what's public is, uh, the, the developer has filed a forty-B application, uh, for twenty-one-story building. Um, simultaneous with that filing, uh, the developer has indicated a willingness to, uh, uh, speak with the town and engage with a committee to discuss an alternative, um, hotel mixed-use project, which I hope will be much less than twenty-one stories, um, and, and certainly a project that, um, is, is something we could live with, I think, a little better than a twenty-one-story residential tower.
Can I, can I add also one that has lower rents than eight to nine thousand dollars for a three-bedroom?
Right.
And that, that just really messes up, uh, Brookline, although the, um, the forty-B doesn't care about that, but I do.
Right. So, um, so that's, that's project number one. Project number two is the Holiday Inn on Beacon Street, um, and that hasn't been made public yet, so I guess this is a bit of news, um, that, um, the, the Holiday Inn was sold sometime this year, I believe, um, and, and has been continuing to operate, but, uh, the, the owner has expressed a desire to redevelop the property, again, into a mixed-use, uh, project, including, uh, an enlarged hotel, they're talking over three hundred rooms, plus a residential component, um, and this would be taking over the, the lot that the Holiday Inn is on. If, if, those of you who are familiar with the lot, it, it, um, there's, there's a six-story building, and then there's a low-rise, uh, leftover from the period when it was a motel back in the sixties and seventies, so, uh, in, in the early eighties, I believe, it was, it was renovated and glassed in, uh, but the footprint of the building stayed the same, at least the, the low-rise part. So there's, there's going to be a proposal for, as I said, a hotel and a residential piece. So, we're going to be putting together a committee following the model of the River Road and Brookline Place and, um...
Davis Path.
Davis Path, the, the...
Redcap.
Redcap site, how can I forget? Um, and, and the, the challenge of, of that committee is, one, the, for the first time, we're going to be looking at two projects at the same time, and, and two, um, the, the other committees have, uh, the, the projects have been, um, purely economic development, they've been hotels or, or office buildings. In, in these projects, um, we're, we're looking at mixed use, so there's going to be a residential piece, a hotel piece, and hopefully a, a retail piece, and perhaps an office piece. Um, so this, this committee is going to be, I think, a little more broadly constituted, uh, and we're looking to the Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB, and the Housing Advisory Board, uh, for some leadership. We're, we're reaching out to town meeting members from the affected precincts, and there's a whole bunch of affected precincts over there, we're reaching out to Butters. So this is going to be a, a, a pretty large, broadly constituted committee, and, and the only way to, for, for a committee that's so large to operate really is going to be through the use of subcommittees, and perhaps, um, a, a method of operation, a method... and perhaps a method of operation, a method of meeting similar to what the advisory committee does. And that's really the only way to kind of make it work with such a large committee. I'm going to be chairing the committee. I'm going to be looking to, I think, Linda Hamlin to help me chair it. We've reached out to the HAB, Roger Blood is going to be helping us, some folks in EDAB, some town meeting members, some abutters, neighborhood activists. So the committee appointments will be coming back to us after the new year. Before you is a draft charge, which I'm going to ask you to look at and provide comments to Andy Martino in the planning department prior to the first of the year. And then the other bit of news is on January 9th, there's going to be a joint meeting with the EDAB and the Housing Advisory Board, where the two developers are going to be presenting their preliminary proposals. And that's going to be starting at 7:00 downstairs in room 103, and that's January 9th, that's a Monday, I believe?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's when the kickoff is going to be. And then after the proposal is presented to those boards, we will constitute the committee and get going. The goal, if we're going to buy in to the proposals in any way, it's going to require a change in zoning at both sites, at one or both sites. And the goal would be to shoot for the November 2017 town meeting, and just for all practical purposes, if we're shooting for the November town meeting, the work of the committee has to be substantially done by the summer. The end of June, July, somewhere around there.
So just for clarification, that meeting on the 9th, which proposal from Chestnut Realty are we going to see? The 40B proposal?
No.
Or the Vision?
The Vision, I'm told. That's what I'm hoping. So I believe, yeah, it's, yeah, it's going to be what they're really proposing, which is not the 40B, or so I hope. But time will tell. So any questions or comments? There's no vote required, but I just wanted to bring this to the boards and the public's attention that we're going to be doing this. Okay, now we'll go to the calendar item we skipped, the JCHE project, question of reviewing and approving the recommendation of Housing Advisory Board, that the town make a preliminary commitment of up to $2.5 million for Jewish Community Housing for the Elderly for a 62-unit affordable housing project at 384 Harvard Street. Roger, Mr. Blood, welcome.
You can call me either.
Okay, Mr. Either.
Roger Blood, current Chair of the Housing Advisory Board. The HAB has asked us to come up with an enthusiastic recommendation for you this evening, probably the best possible use that the board could think of for a substantial allotment of our valued trust funds. I think you have a letter requesting, a request in your packet. The Jewish Community Housing for the Elderly, JCHE, has been interacting with the HAB for the better part of a year, a number of meetings with the HAB and the staff, leading up to a very complete, thought-out proposal for a $25 million total project on Harvard Street as part of the KI site. Senior housing, rental housing for the elderly at 62 units at that site. You're going to hear from Amy Schuckman and her team in a moment. The town's request from the trust fund is for $2.5 million in support of this, so about 10% of the total. I can't think of any use of our funds that meets our highest priority. Number one, you've got, you're going to see and you've already heard, I think, previously, just a terrific project here in terms of its design, the housing, the services that are supporting it, the location. We have a very capable, mission-based, nonprofit housing developer, which translates, unlike most of the 40Bs that we're seeing, into truly full affordable housing, 62 units, and they're not 25 or 20% affordable, but they're all really affordable. Most of the units, the majority, are not just low and moderate income, but lower income range. The purpose of the request tonight is a preliminary commitment from the town, from the Board of Selectmen, that the JCHA needs to proceed up to the state with its application package. So part of our request is for the funds, and part of it is for timely action on your part so that they can, they in turn can move timely and proceed with this project. The other aspect of this proposal that's especially attractive, and you've seen us up here before on a number of others, within the range, when we look at the $2.5 million and what we're getting, there's a tremendous amount of creative leverage on this one that JCHE has put together. There's over a half a dozen other state and federal sources of assistance funding that are going in to make this project feasible, number one. And by some simple division, 60-plus odd units, $2.5 million divided by 60-plus, the per-unit cost for the town to help this project come to fruition is in the $40,000-per-unit range. So in the larger scope of things, this is quite attractive to us in every respect. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Amy Schuckman, who you all know, and she is, of course, the President and CEO of JCHE.
Andy, long-term Brookline resident?
Yes.
From just down the street. So you've heard this project many times before, so I'm going to be exceedingly brief. Let me just do a few quick overview comments. One, just to give you a sense of how committed I am to this project and how important it is to me, I boarded a plane this morning at midnight, or last night at midnight, depending, in Lima, Peru, and arrived in Brookline about 3:00 PM today, not having slept at all, and coming home to a tree having fallen on our house. And so I spent 3:00 to 6:00 getting the tree off our house. But I'm not home. Also, I haven't seen my youngest son in over a week, but I'm here. This is really, really important to me. It also means that if you ask a lot of detailed questions, I will defer to Zoe because normally I'm very familiar with every detail, but my head's a little hot. So that's good. A couple of other key points. Really want to compliment the HAB on this one. We came in at the beginning to the HAB with a 62-unit, all affordable, but we were going to do the straight old tax credit project. And Roger and Bill and some of the people, and Virginia said, you know, there's this really important need in Brookline of like the 60% to 110% of area median. Can't you vary and really diversify so that now this project has many, many layers of affordability, every layer of affordability allowed? And that was a real visionary piece, and so we shifted gears, and I thought that was a really good idea. Compliment to the Board of Selectmen. Last time we were here, we've been here a few times, and I think you remember, last time, we had a lot of support, but there was some niggling issues that we just hadn't gotten right. And you said to us, make the Web, William Street, Webster Street, that's an old project, the William Street people happy, and make that condo association people happy. And listen to them, listen to their trade-offs. And so we did. And I think I farted to you, Mr. Chairman, an incredible email that said, "I came in a cynic, and I'm a believer, and thank you for really, really listening to us." And so we're able to present to you a project that has a lot of local support, and the abutters are all supporting what we want to do, and I think that's significant. Another thing I know, Ms. Daley mentioned, it's good that nonprofits do things for the town. Remind you, this one, we intend to pay full property taxes, whatever your Board of Assessors assesses us at, we will pay the full property tax bill. So we will be contributors in many ways besides all the services we tend to offer, and we intend to open all our services to neighborhood elders, not just our own. We've been talking with the housing authority about specific ways of getting elders who live in Brookline public housing, where there aren't a lot of services, to get services in this building. We've already started those conversations. Mr. Blood mentioned the leverage, it's really significant. I'll also share that we've had now 13 public meetings on this project over 15 months to really try and be responsive. And finally, we don't, we didn't come in with a crazy project that's out of scale and disrespectful and hope that we'll negotiate with you to get something that you can live with. We came in with something that was respectful. We didn't come in with anything until we met with the neighborhood several times and said, what are your dreams, what are your aspirations, and what are your constraints? And so what you see now is, I think, something good. You also might wonder, why are we only asking for $2.5 million? I asked such a bargain, and you've traditionally given more to other projects. And I think that's a really good question. Two answers. One is, we are a private, mission-driven organization committed to fundraising to supplement the services and what we provide. Right now, we do a million and a half a year. That will grow. We've hired a new staff that will enable us to grow that. So a lot of the reason we're not asking you for more is we're going to come up with it on our own. And the second is, we've done a really careful set of design. One of the things is, this is a very green building, which means that we use a lot less energy and water, and so we can keep operating costs down by doing the right thing. And we've made a lot of changes over these 13 public meetings. So this amount is really kind of contingent on the zoning board not wanting to make a lot of expensive design changes, so I just reserve the right to come back. And then you'll see in a minute the urgency. The state has now gone to only one funding round a year. They should have two funding rounds a year. We've had the state out here, they did a site visit with Virginia and Allison Steinfeld, and very impressed, they encouraged us to get into this funding round, so we did. But we won't be eligible without a commitment from the town. That is what will kick us into this funding round, and if we lose this round, it's a whole other year. I don't, I know Mr. Green mentioned some uncertainty about the federal government and what's happening, and that affects us in two ways. One is the direct funding, which comes from the federal government for what we do. Second is, we're already seeing an investor market in buying these tax credits, already getting skittish about what's to come. And so the quicker we can get this permitted and financed, the more likely we have actually making something good happen. Okay. Wrong era? Okay. I don't think I've...
Can you just tell us about the changes you've made?
Good. Specifically, William Street, you're going... Yep, let's go right to that. Green wall there.
Could you go back to that first slide, Doug?
This one?
Okay, yeah. So the maximum is 110% of average medium income?
Yes.
Area.
Area. Okay. Is that enough?
Yeah.
A little better than $8,000 a month, eh? A little better than $8,000 a month, we saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not worried about. So now these slides are going to show exactly what we did differently. So the condo association, to put it mildly, feels extremely strongly that the driveway that they currently share with KI is a disaster for them. It goes through, and it's an easement, and they came with pre-existing condition that this easement allows all the delivery trucks for KI to come in to actually the condo association parking lot.
Oh, really?
And now, again, it's a pre-existing condition, but they hate it. And we can't force KI to change anything, but we realized how upset they were. And so what we did, after a few meetings of back and forth with them, is they said, move the building to the end of the property line, bring your garage up a little bit, and move all the deliveries for KI into inside your building. So it can't, we don't have, our kids aren't at risk of getting hit by trucks, we don't have to see the trucks, we don't have to hear the trucks. And we did negotiate with KI to move their loading dock over so that we could make that happen. And we did, we came back and showed them the design, and they are extremely happy that this, not only corrects a problem with what we were presenting, it actually makes a condition better for them than the existing condition. So that's really an important thing. You may remember, the William Street people really didn't like the narrowness of the sidewalk. They felt it was, the building was looming. So we moved it four feet back. Anybody you see between that and the next one, there's a little seating area. And of course, we have the seating area on the other side on Harvard Street. So that was a big change, and I have to say that William Street folks were really happy with that. This, I think we might have made before, but...
This is Harvard? This is Harvard?
Yeah. Yes, now you're looking at Harvard Street, because they didn't want anything on William Street, so we made sure that the main entrance and drop-off are on Harvard Street. And the current preschool, again, this is making a better than existing conditions, the preschool entrance goes all the way to the other side of the building.
So you lost the kind of little park area?
No! No, 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 we did not. Oh.
No, the park, the green space was moved a little bit further back towards the, sort of the link in the other, there's still that pocket part between our building and the KI building.
Yes, it hasn't been reduced at all. So, sorry, you're right. We were so interested in showing you that we found a drop-off spot that we, but it doesn't reduce it at all. In fact, there were some enhancements of, what's it called, stadiums?
The stair, the, there's a seating wall that actually mirrors KI.
Yeah, you actually have to speak into the microphone because we have our listening audience at home.
The, there's a set of, a seating wall that actually reflects the KI's monumental stairs, so it actually creates a big, the idea is that there'll be actually a big sort of open plaza between, in front of our building, and then also that will continue on in front of KI's building as well.
And obviously open to the public. And finally, people are very concerned about emergency vehicles. Sometimes seniors get it. So what we've done is, we've actually taken one of the apartments out of the rental scheme, and we're going to put a full-time person from us, so 24/7, we will be the first responder for people in the building. Now, I don't want to mislead you, if someone's having a heart attack, we are going to call 911. We're not going to try and resolve that. But in our own buildings where we have experience, typically seniors pull the pole cord for things that we can resolve. And if not for us, they would call 911. And so we are going to do that, and that seems to also have made the neighbors feel like we're being very responsive. So those, those are the basic changes. It may not sound like a lot, but it actually...
No, it sounds like a lot. You've answered a lot of the concerns that we heard from the public.
Yeah, I think we have, and I think, and that feels good because I think we've made a better project. You know, it really does. So as I mentioned, the urgency of getting this commitment, I can't promise you how quickly the state will act, but I can promise you that if we don't get into this round, we will be talking about applying in 2018, not 2017, and that would be a shame.
So I see the pre-application deadline is, was the 15th, so you've done that.
We submitted.
So you need to get all your ducks in a row by the 16th of February.
Yes, except that right now, DHCD is reviewing the pre-applications, and we wouldn't want to not be invited to submit a full application.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
And so, the quicker, the better. I can't tell you it's today, but I think if you wait to February 16th, we might be not invited, and--
Yeah.
That would kind of wreck, wreck everything.
I actually, just, on the funding, our, our part of the funding, I have a question, which I think is probably for Virginia Bullock. So, I noticed this vote is suggesting that some of the money would come from our Housing Trust Fund, and then some from Home, and it says "and/or" CDBG funds. So--
Yeah.
The, obviously, the CDBG committee has not met yet, this board hasn't decided what to do about CDBG funds, but typically, we do put a substantial portion of that funds into housing-related things. But, I'm suspecting that this might mean you have very little money for anything else in the housing arena.
For CDBG?
Yeah.
Currently, this is our main project for affordable housing, so this is where we would like to see the resources go for the next couple of years. And generally, what we've done in the past is, we have made a commitment of up to a certain amount, in this case, 2.5 million, from three sources. And then, as we get closer to the, to the actual closing, and we see, for instance, we don't know what our Home or CDBG allocation will be for next year, for FY18, and potentially FY19. It's our goal to preserve the Housing Trust Fund as, as much as we possibly can, because it is the most flexible funding that the town has, it has the least restraints on spending it. So, what we generally try to do is utilize as much federal funding as we can in the project, but given the fact that we don't know exactly what those appropriations will be, we can't say-- We do have enough in the Housing Trust to cover the full amount--
Well, that's what I was wondering about, because as I think Ms. Schickman alluded to this.
Yes.
One expects that the upcoming Congress and the upcoming, the newly-elected president may be not real CDBG-oriented, and--
We are concerned about the discretionary budget, yes, and--
The exact opposite may be the case. I mean, to the chagrin of states that don't provide great services, but maybe to some benefit of a state like Massachusetts. I think we need to--
Well, even if we get the appropriation, we, last week, heard that we're going to probably take out Section 108 loans against future CDBG allotments. So, my concern is that we're chipping away at this, this pot of money, and we're going to be really constrained in terms of the money that we can give out for programmatic expenses in town in future years.
So, CD, so, you know that, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But then, also, we give money to the Housing Authority for capital improvements, or at least have in the past. So, I don't want to tie our hands with, unconsciously. I want it to be a conscious decision as to where we're directing--
So, any future decision, any decision on future uses of CDBG will be, go through the standard process that we always go through every year, where we have a CDBG committee, and those appropriations will come before the board, and that's what we have to work out. That's why we didn't want this preliminary commitment to have an actual number, but that it was a potential source. Just historically, approximately a third-plus of the CDBG funding has gone to support affordable housing here in town, and it's been a really important source. It's gotten more difficult as budgets have gotten tighter, and who knows what FY18 is going to bring, so--
We can only use 15% of our CDBG money for programs like the Senior Center--
Right.
And the Brookline--
Public services.
--Community Mental Health, and those other programs that typically we give money to. So, there's, the, the rest of the money, as you mentioned, though, the Housing Authority has, has needed and been awarded quite a bit of money over the past years. So, yeah, that was my concern, too. So, the Housing Trust Fund, if, if, for some reason, there's not a lot of CDBG money available, or something, you're saying the Housing Trust Fund does have this money?
We have, we have adequate resources right now to cover this particular commitment in the Housing Trust Fund, yes. But, it's also our hope that we can use Home funding, if the Home funding still exists, and both from our own funds, but within, we're part of a consortium, that we may be able to borrow from other communities into the future, as we did on Dummer Street. So, again, our goal is to maximize federal resources, but, you know, balancing other requests that the town may have for those, so--
Any questions or discussion?
I, I just, this is a little bit of a downstream question, but I'm wondering how this money is going to be used when it eventually is appropriated. I know this is just a preliminary commitment, but are we using this money, and it's going to be paid back over time, as a mortgage guarantee, or what's the, what's the mechanics?
So, in almost all of our affordable housing, in all of our, it's, it's essentially equity. I mean, they're structured as long-term loans that are permanently deed-restricted, but no, we don't anticipate receiving funding back. We have not received funding back. I mean, we're, we're really equity to private financing.
And we pull it back on very rare occasions, I think 100 Center Street, or--
That was a case of which, in fact, we, those funds will actually be returning to the Housing Trust Fund this week. So, we, we do, in the case of refinancing, that--
But it's exceptional.
Very, very exceptional, yes.
Selectman Green?
Yeah. 110% of area medium incomes is, yeah. Is fairly low income, and that's very important. But I'd like Mr. Blood, in particular, to use his creative energies, to come up with some creative ways to use leverage to, you know, maybe with respect to the Housing Trust Fund, figure out how we can help get middle-income housing opportunities here in Brookline. And we're becoming a sort of town that parallels America, parallels a lot of other countries in the world. A lot of very rich people, a lot of very poor people. The middle class is, is just ignored, if not outright screwed. So, I don't know what, what the answer is, but, you know, the Trust Fund, the Housing Trust, you know, is the only source of income that could be used for something like that. And I'm wondering if, you know, someone, if, or you, or anyone else could begin thinking about, you know, how we can address that issue. I mean, we're not going to solve the problem, because, you know, it's really a question of supply and demand. We don't have enough room to increase the supply, but there are still things we can do. And I'd like you to give some thought to that.
Thank you, Selectman Green. It's a very, very good question, and it's, and it's timely in a way. Many of us have, have been thinking about that gap for a long time, and as the market has risen, the gap gets more daunting. This could be a timely time to rethink something that we did quite some time back, or a constraint, actually, that was placed upon the, the allocation of, of our local trust funds. And many people may not be aware of this today, because it's been so long. Until we have the 40B 10% goal reached, there was, I think, a justifiable desire that the majority of our trust funds would be allocated toward housing that specifically met the under 80% of area median income. And that was memorialized at one point by town meeting in a warrant article, a binding warrant article, that, that actually requires when we use our trust fund in support of inclusion, well, the Inclusionary Zoning Warrant Article requires that 10% of the 15% that's required is under 80. So, it might be a good time to take a second look at that, when we reach the 10%, which is, most of us know, is about to happen next year, and, and have, have a good public discussion of whether we should consider reorienting more of our available resources toward the, the upper-low, or the lower-middle, I guess, as you might call it.
Are teachers and DPW workers here?
No, the, a, a very few of, of the people in the, in the public employment categories, who we, who we have a mission to serve, and enable them to live locally, would fall under the 80. They would fall in exactly the category that you're talking about. So, I welcome that discussion. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
I would just want to compliment, go ahead, Selectman Heller, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I would like to make an overall comment. First of all, I want to thank J.C.H. and Amy Schickman for making such tremendous efforts to acknowledge and fix issues that the neighborhood dropped their attention. And, but I also want to make the point that, you know, we, sometimes we're vilified in Brookline by people at the state level, or others who say, "Well," because they hear that you're opposed to a particular aspect of a 40B proposal, or whatever, and they paint the broad brush that, you know, "We don't like affordable housing," and nothing could be further from the truth. And I think tonight's discussion is a very good example of the fact that we are very supportive of affordable housing. We're about, you know, hopefully, we're about to commit a significant portion of money to it. We are recognizing a organization building of a, a large project in Brookline, has worked with neighbors, and successfully to come up with solutions to the issues that the neighbors debrave. So, it's, I want to make the point that it's not that we don't like affordable housing, we do. It's that we don't want it to change the nature of Brookline in the sense of no green space, and huge projects that take over every square foot of a property, or built way above, way higher than anything else in the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera. So, I think it's really an important point to stress. And another example of that, which I'm not sure we made enough noise about, was Brookline Housing Authority's recent addition on Dummer Street, the project there. And again, that project was tastefully done. It leaves lots of green space. It didn't, you know, necessarily use up every single square foot of the, of the lot that it was. It respected neighborhood, the size and the scale in the neighborhood, and the neighbors didn't object. There wasn't a peep. So, you know, I think these are important things to stress in terms of our support for affordable housing, and the reasons that we do object when we do, not to the affordability part, but to the overriding of our, our zoning and our goal of having things like green space, and open space, and adequate parking, and not things that overwhelm the neighbors.
Thank you, Selectman Heller, Selectman Franco.
So, I'll be brief. I want to pile on and compliment J.C.H. for being so thoughtful in working with the neighborhood and getting to a good place. I also want to compliment you, we've got nine other 40B applications soon to be pending, and none of the others are 100% affordable, or tick this box of senior affordable housing. So, compliments to you for bringing a project that, that is so affordable, and that gets at a population that we particularly need to deal with. And thank you so much to the Housing Advisory Board, and to Virginia and town staff for working so hard to make this possible, and a happy story at the end of the day.
Okay, so, I will move that we--
Can I pile on also? Just competing, I, I need to go downstairs.
Okay. He wants to get to the vote. We can talk after.
Right. We, we all agree with Selectman Heller and Franco.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to move that we make a preliminary commitment of up to $2.5 million to Jewish community housing for the elderly for 62-unit affordable senior housing project at 384 Harvard Street. This commitment will be fulfilled by a combination of Brookline Housing Trust, Home and/or CBD, CB--
CDBG.
CDBG funds as appropriate, that's a real tongue twister. Conditions for the commitment include the following: success in securing a comprehensive permit for the project, success in securing non-town funding sources adequate to develop and finance the project as proposed, the imposition of affordability restrictions and perpetuity, local preference and intense selection to the maximum extent permitted by law and by other funders. The commitment will extend for two years following the approval by the Board of Selectmen, and the board authorizes the chair to sign a preliminary commitment letter. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
I'm delighted to vote aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green? Aye. And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And I'm turning over the chair to Selectman Daly for--
Okay, I just want to go back for a minute to the school department. Austin, did, did you hear from any of them about this?
No, I did not. I reached out to Mary Ellen Dunn, and did not get a response about this, yeah.
Well, it's, they, they are currently renting part of the, one floor of the building that faces onto Harvard Street, that's a commercial space, and this just extends it. So, instead of three classrooms, they have the whole floor, and they have four classrooms. And I, I see that the school committee's already signed this, so I just wonder if we--
I think we have to wait till they come and present it to us. It's a--
We're not meeting next week. Are we not meeting for two weeks, Mr. Cliff?
We're not meeting next week. We're meeting--
We're meeting the first week in January.
Slave driver. Okay. All right. The next item is--
Is there, is there anyone else we can contact? Let's see if we can get someone to come up here.
I'll go check her.
The memos from John Bookite.
Yeah. I mean, I agree with Selectman Franco, that, you know, they really should be, you're willing to appear before us, but maybe we have to sort of beat the bushes to get them up, wake them up.
See what I can do.
Okay. Well, or at least if they, you know, you can maybe get an explanation from them over the phone, which you could present to us, at least. So, we have a change of doing businesses on, it's the application of Shilpa Liquors, Inc., doing business as Village Liquors and Convenience, B.J. Kumar Patel owner, for, as a holder of a license to expose, keep for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages as a retail package store at 294 Washington Street. Changing the doing businesses from Village Liquor and Convenience to Brookline Wine and Spirit.
Hi, good evening.
Hi. Are you Mr. Patel?
No, actually, Alpes Barrett, I'm the manager.
Okay. So, tell us what's going on here.
The first, we, you know, we changed the name that time. We did, we did put that DBA change, and I don't know what happened that time. The lawyer did mistake, I don't know. But we did, did last year, application to renew. That time, we also did that DBA, but we have no response from them, you know, to, I don't know what's going on, you know. I got the--
Okay. This is actually a public hearing?
Yes.
Is there anyone, member of the public here to speak on this matter, and for, either in favor or against? No? Seeing no one, questions from the board? All right. I'm going to move favorable action, then, on the application of Shilpa Liquors, Inc., doing business as Village Liquors and Convenience, to, and name change to Brookline Wine and Spirit. All in favor? Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Then we have a change of manager. Rockland Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as Lully's Cafe, Kimberly Tobias owner, holder of a license to expose, keep, for sale, or sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, as of a seven-day common vichyler at 111 Boylston Street, for a change in manager from Jaglo Garsis to Kevin James Buchanan. Hi.
Hi. So, for the record, my name is Angela Vasti, from the office of Robert Allen, from North Washington Street, and I'm here on behalf of the Rockland Food and Beverage. So, we did submit the updated tip certification that the record was lacking.
Where is Mr. Buchanan? We usually like to chat with the proposed manager.
I actually called him today to remind him, and he kind of freaked out, because his kids are in a nativity play tonight--
Uh-huh.
--in North Attleboro, and it's the first time that both his seven-year-old and, like, eleven-year-old are in it together. So, I did try to, I called the licensing department to see whether that was okay, didn't want to disappoint. He didn't want to be here, of course, but he, you know, has to be with the family.
Well, I, okay, I believe he has some previous experience--
Yes.
--as a manager of an establishment that serves alcohol.
Yes, so he's worked at the Hilton Garden at the airport, and actually has won numerous awards. He sent me a couple of them. One of them is the Problem Avoidance Award that he won in 2008. He's also won Regional Manager of the Year. He's has, he, he has had excessive 20 years' experience.
Has he ever had any problems with local police over-- Has he ever had any problems with local police over serving or serving minors or...
No, he actually has a very, very excellent track record, as well as the letters of support that I've received have had glorious remarks regarding him.
Questions?
So you're vouching for him?
Yeah.
Well, I, did you have...
You're a lawyer.
Did you have an opportunity to go over with him our local requirements under the liquor laws?
So I, he's familiar with the ABCC requirements. Bob from my office has sent him, has had discussions with him regarding requirements. He's very equipped.
So he knows he has to keep a notebook with, and have in it the tips certification for all his employees who are serving alcohol?
He'll be sure to be abreast of all the local orders that he's required to follow.
And I would encourage him, if he hasn't already, to have a conversation with Lieutenant Hayes, the alcohol officer in the police department, who would be more than happy to go over our Brookline-specific regulations and bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to say, we usually like to have them here.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, I, if they're in the nativity scene, I, you know, I don't know what we can do about that.
Yeah, it was in North Attleboro.
It's a person's state, but, you know, there's a kid.
But you should, I want you to commit to us that you will make sure that he is very aware of all of our local regulations as well as the state regulations. And we do, you should emphasize to him that we do take our, particularly service to underage very seriously, and, you know, if you get caught, but we do stings, and if you get caught violating that, you know, the penalties can be fairly severe.
Yes, I've actually been reading a couple of the violations on the ABCC website and not only in Brookline but in surrounding areas, and I do see that that's a repeated offense. So I will make sure I speak to him about that, but I do have a lot of confidence in Mr. Buchanan specifically.
Okay. Any other questions?
Public hearing.
Is this a public hearing? Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against? I'm looking at our sole member of the audience. No? All right, I'm going to move favorable action then on the change of manager of Rockland Food and Beverage LLC, Doing Businesses Lully's Cafe, from Jaglo Garsis to Kevin James Buchanan. All in favor? Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thanks.
Now we have, are you here on Cafe Nero as well? Okay, that's the next one. I know that was Bobby's office that was doing there. So I noticed they opened their location in Brookline Village and immediately are expanding to Washington Square.
Well, we did submit the both applications for zoning relief at least at the same time, so it was anticipated for both locations. I hope you guys have had the chance to visit. I went twice today for breakfast and then for lunch.
I just saw it was open. I actually didn't get a chance to go in. So this is a coffee place with other drinks, tea, cocoa.
Smoothies.
And they sell some lunch stuff and some breakfast stuff as well, light cafe fare.
Yes.
Um, seating capacity, they're looking for a seating capacity of 60 seats and hours of operation Sunday to Saturday, 5:30 to 10:00. So the same every day?
Yes.
Okay. I think we had approvals from everybody.
Chairman, I think it...
See, I pay more attention to this one. I know in advance that I'm going to be chairing the meeting.
The approvals before were required to the zoning board hearing. I believe that hearing was held and the seating capacity was approved.
Okay.
Is this the former, it looks like it's...
It was a 7-Eleven.
So we're losing that.
So there is a, the health department has some, they're pretty standard conditions, and I want to make sure your client is aware of them. The establishment is renovated to comply with the health code renovations, requirements, sorry. The operator needs to obtain food safety certification, which I'm sure they must have from the other location, odor control system if there's nuisance complaints, and they need a pre-operational inspection and have to submit the application of fees to the department as required. And do that, they're aware of our bylaw on trans fats, you're not allowed to cook with trans fats in Brookline?
So the health department actually requires them to come in and sit down.
Okay. So they explain that to them?
Yes.
Okay, great. And you can get a copy of this from Brenda Costella.
Okay.
Any other questions?
One question. Do they have a kitchen on site?
Yes, there's, the chef is in the back, so he cooks daily everything fresh.
Are they cooking at one location for both, or are they having chefs at each?
At each location.
Okay. All right.
And they go up for breakfast there, Cafe Nero Breakfast Center?
They have smoothies, Italian coffee, of course, salads, everything.
We are just sort of finishing up on Cafe Nero. Well, was there anyone here that wanted to speak publicly about this application? No? I look again to our one member of the audience. Okay, I'm going to move favorable action then on the application for a common vichyler license of Cafe Nero Americas, Inc., Doing Business as Cafe Nero, Michael Ford Deacon, President, for a common vichyler license at 1633 Beacon Street with a seating capacity of 60 seats and hours of operation Sunday to Saturday, 5:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. All in favor? Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I will vote aye.
I will abstain.
I assume that you're abstaining. One abstention. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I will turn it back over to Chairman Waschinsky.
Okay, the next item is a food vendor license question of approving the application of D and L 81 Enterprise LLC, Doing Businesses My Guy Pizza, for a food vendor license at 8 Cypress Street. And I don't see the applicant here. So I guess that means we hold it?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that concludes the new licenses, and we now have our year-end renewal of our, most of our licenses. And I'll note for the record that we did receive at 5:25 a notice of complaint regarding waxes on Beacon Street, and it's, it arrived too late for us to really do anything about it tonight, because if we're going to take any action on a license, we have to give the applicant notice. But we can certainly bring the complaint to the attention of our building department. I know there's been activity...
Can we hold? Is this...
No, it's an alcohol license, so we can't even hold it without a, because we have to take action by the 31st, and we're not meeting before then. So if we were doing this in November, we could have, we had time, you know.
But Mr. Chairman, could I say that it really doesn't matter whether it's done at renewal or a week later. The requirements are the same. We must give the applicant notice of the complaint and the potential revocation or suspension of the license. So what I would suggest we do is renew this license because of the timeframe, but we will immediately investigate that matter and if appropriate, advise the board that we will schedule a hearing and give that party notice. I did briefly after, you're right, we did get the letter very late, and I did ask the building commissioner about it at that time, and he said he was aware of some complaints. He knew that the license did meet the noise bylaw limits when it opened, but hasn't taken any readings since and can't rely, obviously, on the, on a private party to do that. So we'll have to do some further investigation, and if it merits it, we should call for a hearing and bring the applicant, or bring the licensee in.
So this is a noise complaint?
The complaint is, I believe, set, well, I don't know if you received it, but I think it came in by email.
It was an email.
Part of it was the mechanical...
I believe the complaining is here, maybe we can hear.
The mechanical equipment on the roof is one part of the complaint. There's also noise and other complaints about a late-night establishment like waxes.
Was that the one you were here to speak about? We do have someone who would like to speak.
You want to speak for a minute or two? Mr. Franco?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Franco, town meeting member, precinct one, I'm really sorry to take up your time tonight. I have met with this, the person who complained, who is in a butter. And we talked, he showed me, he brought me into his home and showed me what was wrong. Knowing that the licensing renewal season was here, I contacted the Selectman's office and sent a copy of this constituent's complaint with pictures, and the person in your office at that time, about two weeks ago, forwarded this to the building commissioner. I don't know whether that's in your packet or not.
It is not.
And then, I thought it was going to be, but shame on me, I'm only a town meeting member. I then followed up on Monday, and it was again forwarded to the building commissioner, I was told.
Right, yes.
We clearly do not want to, my constituent would probably like the license held, but I recognize that that's not right. I am really disappointed because now I, I don't look so good to my constituent because the building commissioner has not, or the building commission, has not called or responded. I don't know...
There has been inspector, the inspector's been on site, I'm told.
Did he go to the roof?
I don't know.
In any event...
We have to find out more.
Yeah, and I just, I just am here to emphasize the fact that a constituent has made a complaint. He has taken these readings, obviously, we can't deal with those readings, but it gives you some sense as to whether there's compliance.
Your constituent has his own noise meter?
Excuse me?
Your constituent has his own noise meter?
My constituent does have his own, has access to a noise meter.
Well, I have a noise meter.
No, he's...
You can get a noise meter app.
My constituent is in the music business and has access to sophisticated equipment, which he did go out and get. Thank you very much for indulging me. Happy holidays, and I hope that you will make sure that there's a response.
Can I just say, Mr. Franco, I apologize that, because that's what we want. We want to hear from you in advance, and in fact, you did all the right things. And I had, had I been personally aware of it or had been, talked to Mr. Bennett, I think we could have arranged for a more robust discussion with the applicant here. As I said before, it doesn't prevent us from doing it. We can do it on January 1 or 2, and I promise you I will address it tomorrow with the building commissioner.
So I just, I tried on behalf of the constituent to go through the channels and going...
You did. You did the right things.
Going to the board directly was not part of the plan, and going to you directly was not part of the plan. Thank you.
It should have come to my attention, I, from my office, and I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so with all that said and noting the complaint, I'm going to go through the renewals. So the first set of applications, first set of licenses, is coin-operated amusement devices. So I will move that we renew, approve renewal of the 2017 licenses for coin-operated amusement devices as presented on the report dated December 12, 2016. And there's only two. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, the next item is the common vichyler, and I'll move to approve renewal of the 2017 licenses for common vichylers presented on the report dated December 15, 2016. Note that Pan Roma has closed and its license is not being renewed. And this is a long report, 61 pages of licenses. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next group of licenses is the entertainment licenses, which is contained starting on page 12-71 of the package. And I'm going to move that we approve renewal of the 2017 licenses for entertainment as presented in the two reports dated December 12, 2016. And the first report is 26 pages, and the second report is 17 pages.
Take those separately.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have another category of entertainment license. This is the Sunday Live Entertainment License, and the list is on page 12-114. And I'm going to move that we approve the renewal of the 2017 licenses for Sunday Live Entertainment as presented on the report entitled Sunday Entertainment Licenses 2017 on page 12-114. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The next group of licenses is the food vendor license, and the report starts on page 12-115. I note on page 12-120 of Finagle, a bagel, is at 1244 Boylston Street, is permanently closed, so we should just note that...
That doesn't exist on our list, so that's why I didn't raise it separately.
Okay. So I'm going to move that we approve the renewal of the 2017 licenses for food vendor as presented on the report dated December 12, 2016, and it's a report of 11 pages. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair...
So I just note on that that they were, there was, it says that staff continues to find people who are food vendors putting out chairs and tables for customers, and I, I hope they're advising them that they can apply for common vichyler.
They are.
But I presume that it's more stringent that...
Space.
The, oh, it's space, is that the problem?
Probably.
Yeah. Well, they can't, they can't cheat.
The next category is in holders, and this is starting on page 12-132. And I'm going to move that we approve the renewal of the 2017 licenses for in holder as presented on the report dated December 2, 2016. And this report is two pages.
I noticed that the new hotel at the Red Cap site is...
I noticed that the new hotel at the Red Cap site isn't on here.
We talked about that some today. And actually, the license that you were hearing this evening, Lullies, or I think it's called, is actually in the hotel. And they, and they're independent of the hotel, so they have an independent license. And so apparently the hotel doesn't require the in holder licenses of the other two, because they have a separate food service. I think that's the nature of the in holder license, but I'm not an expert at that.
Okay.
I'm told that they didn't require an in holder license because of that separate licensing establishment that's there. They don't, for example, they don't have room service and so on.
Okay. I wondered about, you know, we recently heard not too long ago from the people on St. Paul Street that were taking what had been, they're in the lodging house category, and they were taking what had been a lodging, a real lodging house, I think, and making it a sort of fancy bed and breakfast. And I wondered if that, are they still in the right category, or should they be in the in holder category?
I don't know. Which establishment is that?
It was the one on St. Paul.
I think it's this Sewell House. It's at the corner of Sewell and Longwood, I believe.
It's on St. Paul. So I think it's this 143 St.
If it's 143, it constitutes, it's a lodging house, apparently.
Even if they're serving food and-
I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to ask my licensing guru.
Good evening. So the in holder is almost a subset of common particular. So what it is, is if you have a hotel, and you're doing room service, or you have, the first floor is open for, there's a bar where you can grab a drink, and then walk over to the television on the other side of the lobby type of thing, that would fall under in holder. What happened at the hotel on Route 9 is that they had an independent establishment that was basically, it's a restaurant operating within the hotel that doesn't have room service. So because of that, all of the liability in terms of liquor sales and liquor enforcement and things like that, all falls on that restaurant and not on the hotel, in terms of liability, is the easiest way to go through that. With a lodging house, even if they did change over to kind of fancier executive suites or something like that, to change-
I don't know if they're executive suites, but I think they are serving breakfast.
To change over to an in holder, they have to have some sort of room service, common areas where things are served. And I remember them saying that they were going to have, like, hot plates and microwaves in the rooms, but I wasn't sure about the bed and breakfast type of nature to it. But if it is going in that direction, we can check it out and figure out if they are converting, that they'll need to get the proper license. And we can, Brenda can check into that for us.
Okay. So that mystery is, might be solved soon. So I will move the in holders, I'll move that we approve the renewal of 2017 licenses for in holder as presented on the report dated December 2. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next category of licenses is the liquor license. This is a long list, starting on page 12-139. And the report is, that's going to be referenced, is 20 pages. And they all, the departments have no exceptions.
So I have one proposed amendment to the list. We just voted a change of DBA, which is not reflected in this list, for what is now Brookline Wine and Spirit. So Shipa Liquors Incorporated should be amended to do DBA as Brookline Wine and Spirit, as opposed to Village.
We probably have to get the ABCC's approval on that first, Selectman Franco. So that's why we didn't include it.
Okay.
You're right. I think we're just going to have to have a gap in time here.
It'll be an administrative procedure.
Right. Okay, so I will move that we approve-
Maybe we can just make that vote, though, conditional-
Yeah, sure.
On getting ABCC approval, and then we don't have to come back to this issue.
We won't have to come back, but Kate, why don't you make a reference to the fact that the DBA was updated today?
Okay, so I will move approval of the 2017 licenses with the amendment condition proposed by Selectman Franco for the sale of alcoholic beverages presented on the report dated December 13, 2016. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next category is lodging houses. And this motion is going to be conditioned on some of the lodging houses passing inspections by the fire building and health departments no later than December 31, 2016. And I'll read the list in a moment. The report referenced in the vote starts on page 12-185, and runs for nine pages. The, I'll note that the health department is recommending a number of facilities not be recommended at this time. And are they not on the list, page 188? Or are they, oh, these are conditions. These are the addresses that will have the conditions. Okay.
Well, there was, it says on our cover memo that there were some inspections that were supposed to be done by today. Do we know whether they were done or not?
I don't know.
Yeah, the condition will be that they pass inspection by the end of the year.
Okay.
And in two cases that they submitted application.
Uh, one case now.
One case, okay.
Right, okay. So let me make the formal motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So they don't complete, in one case, construction. What does that mean? Their license or their, they, we don't approve their license?
Correct.
Okay, so Marion Street, 89 Marion Street seems to be way, I can't see how they can be completed by the end of the year. I may be wrong, but I was just wondering about that, because it's in my neighborhood, and it looks like a nice building.
Brenda can't answer that, hard day.
I guess we can just vote on this, and if they don't make it by the end of the year.
Then we'll re-vote it.
Then, you know, we can always approve their license after the fact. But this is a renewal. Yeah, I have to consult with the health department about that specific location. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they can be renewed unconditionally if they haven't passed.
Correct. So, but I, so what happens on December 31 is, I think our vote is that they would not, not be allowed to operate the lodging house at that location.
They'd have to come back to us and be granted a license.
Granted a new license, yeah.
Okay, let me make the-
They can do that at any point.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm going to move the, to approve the renewal of the 2017 licenses for lodging houses presented on the report dated December 14, with the conditions that the following lodging houses successfully pass inspections by the fire, building, and health departments by no later than December 31, 2016. And the effective addresses, and this matches the list on page 188, is 1017 Beacon Street, 1754 Beacon Street, 58 Manchester Street, 89 Marion Street, 143 St. Paul Street, 400 Heath Street, 1023 Beacon Street, 1047 Beacon Street, 1059 Beacon Street.
1459.
1459, sorry. And 50 Goddard Avenue.
And Melcy, one of these two.
Right. And an additional condition, that the lodging house at 50 Goddard Avenue submit all required paperwork and payment of a $50 late fee no later than December 31, 2016. So that's, that's, that's my motion, and I'm sticking with it.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
One more question. And it's December 31 date. On the cover sheet, it says December 20, which is today.
They said they were anticipating doing the inspections by today.
The next category, and there's only two more categories, is the registered marijuana dispensary. And we only have one that we're very familiar with.
I just wondered, I thought we had their license conditioned on them having a police detail.
And they do.
So is that, do we need to specifically state that again when we vote this?
Well, that's the term of their current license, so you're renewing their current license. The term, I think all the terms and conditions of that-
We should just reference it for the record.
Okay, so-
There is, I should say, there is an opportunity for them to seek discontinuance of that. We have not allowed that, and probably won't for the near term.
They asked once, and we said no. So I just think, we should, our vote should reflect that we expect them to continue having-
There's like 40 conditions. So I will, I'll move that we approve the renewal of the 2017 license for a registered marijuana dispensary licensed to NEDA, continuing the conditions of the license previously approved.
Including the detail.
Including the detail as stated in the license. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last category is secondhand motor vehicles, classes 1 and 2. And one of the holders has not yet submitted their paperwork, so it's going, we're going to have a condition, a condition on theirs. So here's the motion, that we move to approve renewal of the 2017 licenses for secondhand motor vehicles, classes 1 and 2, with the condition that Swanson Automotive of 666 Brookline Avenue submit all required paperwork and a payment of a $50 late fee no later than December 31, 2016. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last order of business is appointments to two boards and commissions, Park and Rec, and then the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Clickman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one expiring vacancy, and one term that is expiring, and the incumbent is not seeking reappointment.
So this is Park and Rec.
This is Park and Recreation Commission, I'm sorry. And so you need to either reappoint or appoint two individuals to the available seats, and you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 applicants. So I'm going to list the names, and when I, when I call for a vote, you would either say yea or nay to these individuals, and we'll go through and figure out which ones are, we'll get the required votes for the two available seats. John Bane?
Yeah.
Aye.
Randolph Micklejohn?
Aye.
Richard Nangle? Stuart Silvestri?
Aye.
Wendy Sheridan?
Aye.
So the successful applicants are Mr. Bane, who's been reappointed, and Ms. Sheridan, who is the new member to the Park and Recreation Commission. And now we move to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission. And in this case, there are actually six available seats, but only five, I mean, excuse me, there's five applicants for six available seats. But I'll go through the list anyway. John Malcolm Cawthorn?
Aye.
Enid Shapiro?
Aye.
Ginny Vaz?
Aye.
Emmanuel Howard?
Aye.
Yvette Johnson?
Aye.
So all those individuals will be either reappointed or appointed to available terms on the, on the commission.
Okay, I think that concludes our business for tonight. Thank you very much, and have a great holiday, whichever holiday you celebrate.
Well, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to all.
And although we will not be allowed to say it shortly, happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah.